All right, welcome. Whoa. Stop it, microphone. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is April 17th. Our business meeting is in the evening. And I will ask Mr. Krupp to take the roll call.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Go please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, normally, we do have citizens communication first. That's been trying to do that since I took office. But tonight, we're going to have a presentation that I thought was very important. Mr. Krupp, considering where he recently came from, agreed to that. And so, Ms. Krupp, you'll introduce this presentation?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. And this is a presentation that comes to us at the request of the Chair as we all have been following up in Washington State, Snohomish County, the follow-up and the tragedy involving the Oso landslide. And we thought it would be appropriate and helpful to talk here tonight about landslide hazards here in Clackamas County. And so, we have with us this evening Nancy Bush, who is our Director of Emergency Management. And she's accompanied by Mr. Jay Wilson from our Emergency Management Department. And then Mike McAllister, our Director of Planning as well, to talk about our landslide situation here in Clackamas County. So Nancy, are you prepared to get started?
I am prepared to get started, thank you. So, good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. And as Don mentioned, I am Nancy Bush, the Director of the Emergency Management Department. And I do have with me Mike McAllister, who is our Planning Director, and also Jay Wilson, who is the Hazard Mitigation Coordinator for Emergency Management. We are very pleased that you asked us to provide this presentation on landslides in Clackamas County, specifically regarding response and recovery and mapping that was recently completed, looking at the most populated areas in Clackamas County. I would also like to mention that Clackamas County is the only county in Oregon that currently has this information. We have been watching the events from the March 22nd slide, which is unfolding currently and still in Oso, Washington. And we're learning as much as we can from their experiences. Responders, residents, and volunteers are still working on recovering bodies. And even today, they just recovered three more bodies, and they still have four people on the missing list. All 39 victims that they have recovered have been identified at this time. The community continues to recuperate physically and mentally and are preparing for a long road ahead. And even just today, they announced that the road and the highway that has been affected will not be open at least until fall and probably later. So, right now, I'm going to turn the mic over to Jay Wilson to discuss some of the aspects of landslides in Clackamas County and what we know from our past experiences right here. And then Mike will talk to you later about the new maps, the availability of those maps, and the next steps in map adoption. Jay?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Ludlow, Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Schrader. It's very pleasurable to be here and to discuss landslide hazards here in Clackamas County. I'm going to just advance the slides. Perhaps Mary may have to... There we go. And just talk a little bit about these maps that we've recently gotten that are updated. Clackamas County has a lot of different types of landslide hazards. There's a number of different forms that these can take. And all of them are very unique. I'm not going to go into the details, but just to use an illustration like this to showcase there's a lot of complexity in understanding these hazards in our county.
Are you hitting the side one?
Advance? Okay. And we've got a long history in this state of having landslide problems, going back especially to the 96, 97 storm systems that came in. We had landslide hazards that occurred across the entire state, especially in western Oregon. And our county was hit and impacted in a large degree in a lot of our populated areas as well. Up to date, across the entire state, the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries has been mapping historic landslides, ones that are basically are...have had an occurrence. And our county has a lot of historic landslides across the entire county, but especially in the southwest area, which is, for the most part, unpopulated. But as this slide shows, landslide hazards in this county continue to occur every year. These sets of, from a three-year period of from 2005, 2006, 2007, just illustrate some of the more chronic types of landslides that we have on an annual basis that we have to deal with. And moving forward even to the year in 2009, when we had that big snow event that lasted for a couple of weeks and then a heavy rain on snow after that, there were a number of severe landslides that did a lot of property damage and did a lot of infrastructure damage as well. This slide just gives you an idea for the Department of Transportation and Development. These are costs that they've incurred on an annual basis just for landslide repairs. And it emphasizes that also the losses that incur from having these kinds of damages to our roads, bridges, and other infrastructure are not just the replacement cost, it's also a cost in downtime to the community, loss of service and disruption, you know, inconveniences. Those kinds of indirect costs also have an impact on our residents and citizens. And so, after that 2009 event, we got a presidential declaration with FEMA. And we did have some hazard mitigation grant money that was available through the state that the Department of Geology approached us with a proposal. They said that there's this large area, most of the population is included in this area, the northwest portion of the county. It's recently had this new type of mapping done called LiDAR, which is this aerial high resolution imaging that, at the time, it was all being completed. And they asked us if we would be interested in approaching this grant-funded opportunity with federal money and local match money. And we...I worked with Mike McAllister and at the time with Steve Wheeler, the county administrator. And we put together the local match using money from the county, from Metro, and from three cities, Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, and Wilsonville, to put all of that together to pay for this project that was delivered in November of last year. And so, what did we get, having this most comprehensive mapping in the state right now? We originally had these landslide inventory maps, which was strictly, like I said, a documentation of what is strictly on the surface where a landslide had once occurred. These new maps are called susceptibility maps. And using this high-resolution imaging, they can go in and basically come up with a potentiality for future landslides being either shallow-seeded, deep-seeded, which is like the one in Washington that we've seen, and then debris flows, which are these narrow channels that get fast-moving landslides. And just to give you a quick example of the differences, this is what the older maps, the current maps, look like. And they only really detail a description of what the landslide is. The newer maps really get into a low, medium, and high gradation for the particular type of landslide hazard they're dealing with, this one being shallow-seeded landslides. And so, I'm going to turn it over now to Mike McAllister, the Planning Director, to talk about next steps.
Well, thank you. And I want to emphasize the new maps that Dogami has put together are published maps. They are available for public review. However, they have not been approved or adopted by the county for regulatory purposes. And what I want to talk about is kind of some real basic steps that the county has to go through in order to use that new information on the new maps. We're very excited about the maps. It's great information, it's very detailed information. A lot of the work done by Dogami in that process also kind of looked at liabilities and things like that, if landslides occur in the area and the susceptibility to damage to bridges and infrastructures and public facilities. So, it's some great information that they put together. In a nutshell, landslides are regulated under the statewide planning, Oregon statewide planning goals. It's statewide goal seven. It is called the areas subject to natural hazards. In order for the county to use this new information and the new maps, there's a couple of things that have to happen. First of all, the Department of Land Conservation and Development is going to, or is currently reviewing the maps completed by Dogami. And that review, in effect, is to look at the process, the methodology, the end product of the maps, to determine if they are appropriate to be, to use for counties, local governments in this place, in this case, Clackamas County, to use for landslide mapping and landslide planning. To the extent that DLCD approves those maps, they're deemed to be sort of best available information. And the county can rely on those as a reliable inventory for regulating landslides. So, that's the next steps that have to happen at the state level. To the extent that LCD, CD, LCD adopt those maps for planning purposes, then the next step is that Clackamas County would need to initiate an amendment to the County Conference of Plan. And in that process, the county would consider and potentially adopt those landslide maps that Dogami prepared. To the extent that that happens, those become a regulatory tool for planning purposes. Effectively, at the same time, we would initiate amendments to the Zoning and Development Ordinance. And those amendments to the Zoning and Development Ordinance would establish regulations, if you will, for how people develop and if they can develop on those identified landslides and under what circumstances. There is, we anticipate, well, as part of our grant from Dogami, they are going to, DLCD and Dogami are going to be providing some technical assistance to the county to adopt a model ordinance, a regulatory ordinance, that hopefully the county can take that and sort of adapt to our local zoning ordinance, but it does a lot of the work up front. So, it would be a very significant technical assistance to help us through that process. There is a meeting scheduled on May 8th this year, you know, in the next couple of weeks, with Dogami, DLCD, a number of other stakeholders, including staff here, to really talk about this process that we're going through for DLCD to look at the maps, when the model ordinance has become effective, and you know, how we're going to get through this process and what timeline we'll be in. So, we're excited about that. I believe the Commissioners have been invited to attend that. But Dogami's going to be talking in a little more detail about the maps and how they adopted them, the process they went through, the methodology, those sort of things. So, should be a very good meeting. And then I would like to say that I was actually just brilliant in putting the adoption of this stuff into the fourth year of our work program that you're all aware of, which is not a zoning development ordinance. It just happened to happen that way. But with the work that Dogami and DLCD need to do and writing into the model ordinance, you know, it'll be another year or so before that process is completed. And as you know, we're on a five-year out of the zoning development ordinance, and this landslide mapping and regulatory review is in year four, which is 2015 and 2016, which will actually, actually should work very good in terms of getting through these other steps and being in very timely for us completing that work during that year. In the meantime, again, those maps are available. They are not a regulatory tool. Right now, the county in the Conference of Plan and in our zoning ordinance, we are relying on geologic hazard maps that were prepared by Dogami back in 1975. So, we do have an inventory. It is not near to the depth and quality and detail of the new maps. But we do have those landslide areas and mud flow and debris slide areas that are inventoried right now. We have development regulations in our zoning development ordinance under Section 1003 that regulate how and when you can develop when you have that, those landslide and topography issues on your property. So, we are currently administering those regulations. Moving forward, again, the new maps are a resource document only at this point, not a regulatory tool. Those maps are available on the state webpage and on our Planning and Zoning Division webpage. And we are having some conversations now internally with our folks from PGA and Jay and myself and some of the planners that are involved in hazard planning about kind of how to get the word out that these new maps are available, encourage people to use them as they're doing due diligence on their property or trying to develop their property, doing additions to their house, those sort of things, so at least it's information that they're aware of. With that, I want to hand it back to Nancy with just a couple of closing comments.
Yeah, just briefly, want to talk about emergency management and, you know, what our role would be. We are, we do work very, sorry, we do work very closely with our stakeholders to do preparedness, response mitigation, and recovery, just for all hazards. We do have a hazard mitigation plan, and it was just recently updated. But I would also like to note that Clackamas County was the first county in the country to have a hazard mitigation plan. And we continue to be a leader in that particular area. So, that is also available on our website. Also, we talk about preparedness, and it depends on others, it depends on our residents and what they do and how they prepare for themselves for all hazards, not just landslides. And then, we do use a lot of materials from Dogami, and they have information not only for landslides, but other hazards that we have here in Clackamas County. So, we'd like to encourage our citizens and our residents to go take a look at the materials, look at our website, and be prepared. And that is the most important message that we have right now, this evening, for anything. And we're happy if residents want to call us, talk to us, you know, have a venue that they would like for us to present at, we're happy to do that. And I think our next slide is the slide for, if, because of what is going on in Oso, Washington... Oh. Sorry. We do have a slide that we'd like to put up if you want to make donations. We have a slide for the Snohomish County Red Cross, where donations can be made. And you can do it online, or you can also mail a donation, which the address is there for you as well. So, we thank you for listening this evening, and we'll entertain any questions you may have.
Comments, Commissioners? You know, Nancy, I have the pleasure of serving on the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. That's an amalgamation of a lot of authorities, including Clark County, Washington County, Multnomah County, and Portland. And Nancy is the top advisor to me, being on that board. But you know, that's what they try to take into consideration is there will be a disaster. It's not if, it's when, and what type, of course, and the severity of same comes later. But to plan for that, and even to something as nobody really thinks about, but these kind of people, the professionals that deal with this, is just debris management. For those of us old enough to remember the 1962 Columbus Day Storm, there was a lot of debris. And to manage that is very important. And FEMA, I think they give you very short days to clean that up. How long?
They give us 90 days, but we usually don't find out about it until we're like 10 days in.
So, you have to plan, ladies and gentlemen, where you take all of the debris. And so, that is one of the things that Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization will be dealing with, but this is just one of the possible tragedies that can befall our county or anybody else at any given time. But again, I encourage you to go online and check all this out. And again, congratulations to all our professionals for bringing this forward. And Nancy, always great to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now, we have citizens communication. The first two I have is Mr. Dick Wanker and Corey Hawkins. Might I say, having known you gentlemen, you're finally dressed tonight.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow. Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read about the Grange.
Pull that microphone up towards yourself, because you can probably hear the echo. We want to hear you a little bit.
Okay. May I read it?
Please.
Whereas the Grange Organization has served as a beacon of citizenship and civility since its founding in 1867, and whereas social interaction and educational efforts for the Keystone's that have allowed great achievements in nonpartisan legislative action and much-needed service projects the Grange, which has benefited the community and states of which our members reside, and whereas our great nation has benefited from the Grange, never forgetting that we are an order whose members believe in American values and hometown roots. And whereas the Grange has remained true to the idea of developing better and higher manhood and womanhood by ensuring that each member is given the opportunity to rise to their full potential as leaders, as Americans, and as contributing part of mankind. And whereas the Grange includes all members of their family within our organization to meet, talk, work, and general act together for mutual protection and advancement. And whereas we, the values of the Grange, are needed by America now more than ever. Therefore, resolved that April 2014 is hereby proclaimed Grange Month. We open our doors and arms to all seeking to improve America through open discussion, civility towards those who may differ, and to grow as a person. And as our order celebrates 146 years of service to America, we welcome those dressing to make a positive difference in the lives of those around them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman John Ludlow, Commissioner Paul Savis, Martha Schrader. I have here a little history about...
You can tell us your name, Dick.
Oh, I'm Dick Wonker, not Wanker. And I reside in Redland, out in the Redland area on Bradley Road in Oregon City. I'm a member of the Redland Grange. And as you know, this is National Grange Month, and this proclamation that was read by Mr. Hawkins is declaring that to you. And my little spiel here is the Redland Grange Number 796 was founded in 1931, celebrating 83 years of service to the community and small farmers. April is National Grange Month, celebrating 150 years of service. There are 177 active Granges in the state of Oregon. Clackamas County Pomona Number One has 16 subordinate Granges, the largest county Grange group in the state of Oregon. Our state Grange motto is "In essentials, unity; in non-essentials, liberty; in all things, charity." We meet once a month at our individual Grange buildings, and we have quarterly meetings with our county Pomona. And one week each summer is dedicated to the Oregon State Grange Convention this year, which will be held in Redmond, Oregon. National Grange Convention each November will be held in Ohio. Redland Grange meets the second Thursday at 6:00 p.m. for plot luck and a general meeting at 7:00 p.m. One of our favorite activities is presenting books for the thirds, that is dictionaries to the third graders. On the local level, the Granges in Clackamas County provide food, clothing, bedding to the homeless and needy people in our area. And most of us do road cleanup once or twice each year. We strive to make our neighborhood safe, clean, and friendly. And if anyone wants to join the Grange or more information about the Grange, we have a Grange website at www.nationalgrange.org or www.oregonstategrange.org. Again, that's www.nationalgrange.org or www.oregonstategrange.org. And thank you for your time.
Gentlemen, yeah, thank you. You're not going anywhere yet. So, my experience with Granges, certainly they've been around, I've been around Clackamas County all my life, but you know, certainly seen the Granges pop up. There used to be a lot more people enjoying a Grange. But I popped in when I was campaigning a couple of years ago and took several Granges, including Redland, met these fine people, and four of them sit in the audience as well. And of course, what struck me first is going to their meeting, it was the six o'clock dinner. The seven o'clock meeting, of course, was full of a lot of pomp and circumstance and ritual that is, you know, very important to Grange members. So, Mr. Wonker got ahold of me, required that I join somehow. I did so, me and my wife. And we are now, after a lot of education, six-degree Grange members, which I thank you for pushing me into, all of you in the audience too. But I'm very proud of these people. They really represent wholesome values that too many times in America has gone by the wayside, the basic principles of taking care of your home first, along with your children, and then reaching out to help one another. So, I want to congratulate you for coming here tonight, and of course, it being National Grange Month. And I, again, having witnessed everything you do, I'm very proud of you folks, especially your triggered turkey last Thursday night. Thank you very much. But again, want to thank you for coming today and encourage anybody to look up this fine organization, along with a lot of 501(c)(3)'s that exist here in Clackamas County, really for the benefit of a lot of people who are in need out there. So, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next two citizens tonight, Shirley Soderberg and Eugene Schoenheit. On deck after that, Christine Kozinski and Joe Heverkamp.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. My name is Shirley Soderberg. I reside in the Oak Grove area of unincorporated Clackamas County. I'm approaching you this evening to specifically address you, Chair Ludlow, and the communication that was sent out via candidate Bowerman's email. The first thing I want to address is just because Commissioner Savis wishes to research something prior to casting a vote does not make him confused and ineffective. He is, has an outstanding record over the last three and a half years and many accomplishments. He just doesn't shoot from the hip. And number two, how do you know he left a blank ballot? The last time I looked, we still had a private vote in the state of Oregon. I have no problem with you favoring or endorsing any candidates for election, but to use your powers as the chairman is where I have the problem. I just don't think that's right. In fact, I think that it's downright unethical for you to speak against sitting Commissioners when you continue to work with them every day. It makes me, as a voting citizen of this county, question the decisions made by you because I find that an underhanded tactic. If I hear you say "it is just politics," quote-unquote, I will vehemently disagree with you because it sounds very personal to me. I would ask you to examine your methods and your tactics so that you don't criminalize someone in the future. My mother always taught me that if you can't say anything nice about someone, don't say anything at all. And I think that's pretty sound advice, don't you? And I think that's pretty sound advice, don't you? Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Real briefly, Shirley, just so you know, if you Google it on Portland Tribune, that was a quote from Mr. Savas, that he left his ballot blank. So that's not me making that up, just for, you know, for purposes of that. Unethical, that's your choice to call it, that is not. I'm not going to call it anything else, but I just thought I'd respond to where I found that information. Eugene?
Good evening. Well, I'm here tonight to talk about the survey you people, our new Commissioners, discussed this week, and to give you a little insight of what I know...
Eugene, just pull that a little closer to you, I can barely hear you.
Well, over the years, I've designed several surveys, and I've reviewed many political surveys, and the results of each survey always comes down to, or the question comes down to, is ask the right people to get the right answers. And by, and reading your survey and comparing population information, some areas are overrepresented and some are underrepresented, and I had brought a chart tonight to show what I mean here. This is a chart from your PDF file.
Eugene, I'm just trying to guide you for the camera, bring it up. Bring it towards yourself.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to try and read it. This is off of all your online survey. The last questions, well, these last questions make sure you have a valid sample of the community. And going down to the online response category, it, you know, this says, "What city do you live?" Well, I happened to notice this, and then I went into it, and I saw one that looked a little funny, so I started researching the numbers. And I went down here to Oregon City, and of the online survey, fifteen percent of the people of Clackamas County filled that in, or fifteen percent, you know, of the survey filled it in. We got Clackamas, we got, Oregon City is only eight point four percent of the county, which is thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty voters. Another city, ten percent was represented on the online survey, yet only five point three percent of the county of, I mean, okay, five point three percent of voters within the city of, live in the city of Milwaukee. On the phone survey, another example, when the phone, when the survey company phoned people within the city of Milwaukee, they said twelve percent were from Milwaukee, yet only five point three percent actually, you know, are in the city of Milwaukee. Going down, Estacada, this is a very interesting one. Estacada, seven percent of the respondents were in Estacada, yet only point seven three percent are the county population. Lake Oswego is not as bad. Five percent responded, but nine point six percent are in the county, are in the city of Lake Oswego. And Malala, five percent responded, and two percent were actually within, living within the city. So I'd want to say, why is this important? And quite, sum it up, about fifty-five percent of the people in Clackamas County live within the cities. When they leave their, when they leave their driveway, they're driving on city streets that are maintained by the city and not the county. That's one reason. Another reason would be people vote differently in different parts of the county. Some people are more likely to support additional taxes, and that's why it's important that Milwaukee, Oregon City, Estacada...
Eugene, I got a lot of cards here. I just got a ton of cards, see? So I really, I'm giving you three forty-five.
Twenty seconds.
All right.
Okay, anyway, that's why, you know, these cities need to be, you know, represent equally. And these are just a few reasons, and, you know, you may need to do additional surveys or further research to find out what's, you know, that this survey isn't quite right.
Yeah, you know, and Mr. Schmidt had designed this, along with people who did it the previous two years ago. And, you know, random is random, and let's say we got more from Estacada than ever, but if you really look at most of the questions, they were very, very generic in the sense that we were trying to talk to all the citizens of Clackamas County. And if we went to Estacada and asked five different people, I'll bet you in Estacada or any other city, we'd get five different answers, right? So, you know, also take into account, what do we do with this information? We certainly use it as we go along in making decisions throughout the year. You can depend that we're looking at this survey to remind us, at least on the sampling, what the public has to say. But if you, for example, feel that any of the answers we use in determining policy is somehow out of line, you know, you always take that advantage, you come here and talk to us, right?
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make you aware of this, and I only, you know, I figure a couple percent off, yeah, sure, that's fine, but, you know, at least a little bit more than just a couple percent.
Population, that's absolutely true. I see that now. And I never looked at that, so thank you for catching that. We will be talking to Mr. Schmidt about the outcome of that, and certainly that this information and advice will be taken forward to the team that do this two years from now, and I'm sure we'll try to adjust that accordingly. Truly is a random survey. Thank you both. And Christine Kozinski, Joe Haverkamp, followed by Lindsey Reinhardt and Ginny Davidson.
Thank you for getting me in before I have to be at a Hamlet meeting at seven. Christine Kozinski, I live on Holly Lane, a street that has lost six homes to landslides. I had talked many, many years with Cam Gilmore and with Ann Leininger about the huge losses the county was taking in repairing roads, suffering landslides, and also regarding future liability. So far, county governments have not been liable in court for landslide issues. My concern is, it's only going to take one case to make that change. I did send a letter to Mike McAllister earlier this year requesting that the county consider writing landslide regulations, and I gave him my concerns. I also have recently been giving testimony to Oregon City, and I probably should send that to you, to bring you up to speed. There is a state law, O R S one oh five point four six two. It is the seller's property disclosure statement, and in most cases, this is not being upheld. So when a new property owner buys a new home or property, it is supposed to be disclosed to them whether this property is in a landslide zone. That isn't happening. I also have been in contact with the Northwest Insurance Council, who is working with the people in Oso, Washington, regarding the fact that people who live in landslide zones cannot get insurance for their losses. In two thousand and seven, I got a letter from the city engineer of Oregon City. Well, actually, I sent her a letter, and I said, "Dear engineer, citizens of our neighborhood would like to be updated on the proposed changes to the steep slope and landslide regulations for Oregon City." I got an answer dated February twentieth, two thousand and seven, from Oregon City. If you read our existing code, we already have in place requirements for development on slopes of twenty-five percent or greater. In an effort to improve our existing code in the future, city staff has been working with DOGAMI to develop a plan to create a landslide hazard susceptibility map for Oregon City that would indicate areas of low, moderate, and high susceptibility to areas of landslides. They were going to apply for FEMA funding to develop that program. In two thousand and eight, I wrote back to an Oregon City planner, and I asked him to bring us up to date again as to where they were. He said that they were continuing to work on these regulations and that they thought they would be in place after the Park Place Concept Plan was approved, but that didn't happen. In two thousand and eight, I received a letter from the city engineer in Oregon City stating that there would be two stages to their regulations. The second stage has still not been written. The second stage, again, would be in working with DOGAMI. They would be using the city of Salem's code as a template for their code. I agree that Salem's code will provide a good model for us to use. This, again, would be rating risk areas low, moderate, and high risk. I also gave Oregon City information on the...
I'll say this at the same time I asked the others, I've really got a long list, I'm sorry, could you wrap up?
I'm going to put a packet together. I'll get you my testimonies and what I gave to Oregon City to bring you up to speed on what the people of Holly Lane are doing regarding landslide regulations.
Thank you, and continue to communicate with Mr. McAllister. Just to save, real briefly, I've been a real estate broker for thirty-seven years. The property, seller's property disclosure is very important. It is not a warranty, it's not a guarantee, and what it says on there is, "To the best of your knowledge, to be true," and that would be the seller signing. And you know, that's interesting about that, Christine, because, you know, what you, there is that adage that says, "What you don't know won't hurt you." That ain't true in this case. So a specific slide zone is hard for a seller to know of unless we do the kind of exposure we did tonight for the citizens to say, "Gosh, I think I live in that area." Send them to the site and see, and unverified, scientific but unverified, not adopted by the county situation, but I think by us guiding that, and then certainly Mr. McAllister's plan to review this in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, will help bring to the forefront more information for people to know if they are near one, if they own a house there, maybe even if they're buying one there, okay? So, yeah, that's, I will tell you this, the trick that principal brokers use to make sure that they get the property disclosure. You see, unless it's signed by both parties, they don't get their paycheck later on. So it wakes them up quite well. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Ms. Haverkamp?
Chair Ludlow and Commissioners, Joe Haverkamp, Oregon City. I'm also here about the email that I had, that, the letter that you distributed throughout the county. My son got one, and he lives way in Sandy. I'm very displeased, and it's not only me. Patrick Sheehan writes that he was nauseated, and he was, he said it was vile with those comments that you made. Patrick Sheehan represented Clackamas County in the House in Salem. Not only he, but Mayor Jeremy Ferguson also was very disgusted, the way that you have twisted the truth. Also said that you're very childish and has temper tantrums, and you need to grow up. Jane Loken, which also represented us in the House, she was very displeased with this. And she, one of the comments she put in her article was, "When people cut down active folks in their own party, it's generally an ugly thing." But it goes on and on and on. And North Clackamas Chamber, which is very in tune to our community, has endorsed Paul Savas and Jim Bernard. Are we going to say that they don't know what they're doing? I think that when two people come before this council, Karen Bowerman is running against Paul Savas, Steve Bates is running against Jim Bernard, and testifies, the taxpayers pay for them to be doing their campaigning. I've never seen it done in any county commission, and I have been involved in, I'm seventy-four, and I've always been involved in politics. I have never seen this done. I know the last time, you did it, but I have never seen it done, where a seated commissioner cuts down his own commission. It's not done. I think it's ridiculous. I think you need to grow up and treat everyone equal. The Argonian even endorsed Paul Savas. So I think that you need to clean up your act, treat people humane. Don't treat them like, you know, like they shouldn't be treated. I mean, Karen Bowerman, all the stuff, she comes before the council and says, she had to be, it has to be fed to her because she's only been here from California for four years. So I think that we need to clean up this commission. I know definitely it will be cleaned up in two years, but before the two years are up, you need to straighten up, Ludlow. Thank you.
Well, it's hard to be quiet after criticism like that, ladies and gentlemen. Many of you have been to many of the meetings that I have chaired. Now, anybody out there in TV land or on your computer can go to Clackamas County and view every meeting I've presided over. There's been around sixty business meetings just like this. There has been probably double that amount of planning and work sessions. Nowhere has anybody saw me lose my temper, I don't think, child, act childish either. If you can find where I have lost my temper, please point it out to me. I'm sorry, Mr. Ferguson feels that way, I've never seen him in these chambers for an entire meeting. But again, every meeting that we hold is either recorded or you can watch the video of that. I'm sorry that Mr. Sheehan got sick. I'm sorry that somebody thinks I have a temper tantrum. I'm sorry that Jane Loken says that in their own party, ladies and gentlemen, we aren't elected by party, we're elected by all of the Clackamas County citizens, all of them, independents, Democrats, Republicans. I have no party on this commission. I take input from everybody, from every side. If you want to see a duplicate of sitting commissioners endorsing those challengers who are trying to take other people off, go to Washington County now, where the same thing has happened. It should not be any kind of a rule out there that if you endorse, you can only endorse a sitting commissioner. Why even endorse at all? Then you shouldn't have endorsements. You should be free to endorse whom you want, give the reasons for that, and go on with life. It seems, as always, including my campaign last time, where they were trying to impugn my integrity. And indeed, I took this office with a rumor of a reputation I did not earn, and I'm really getting tired of somehow being unethical, somehow being, losing my temper, which is hogwash. I'm really getting tired of hearing the same old thing. There's a Socrates phrase that fits this. It says, "When the debate is lost, slander becomes the tool of the loser." Indeed, we are seeing some exhibitions of that today. So Lindsey Reinhardt, thank you, and Ginny Davidson.
Welcome. I'm Lindsey Reinhardt. I was here at the last meeting, and I talked to you guys about medical cannabis. I reside in Happy Valley, and I'm new here. I sent an email to all of you at the BBC email address, and I haven't received a reply back from any of you. So just to make sure that you heard what I said, I wanted to come read it to you here. My name is Lindsey Reinhardt, and I'm a new resident of Clackamas County and medical cannabis patient. I moved to this county for a job as the P R F, or Person Responsible for a Dispensary the forty-fifth parallel. We're a new provisionally licensed dispensary in the area and are opening our doors very soon. I have also moved to Oregon from Idaho for safe access to medical cannabis to treat my multiple sclerosis. Safe access is so important, in fact, that I started an entire organization under Green Railroad dedicated to moving patients from states that don't provide safe access to medical cannabis to states that do. We don't relocate patients within a medical state. I have three Idaho patients that are looking to relocate to Clackamas County within the next four months with all of the families that will be adding to our local workforce and growth. I thought that when I moved to Clackamas County that I would have safe access to my medication. I also thought I would be able to work at the location that I moved here to work at. I cannot afford to move, nor do I wish to. I like Clackamas County, and I need safe access to my medication in Clackamas County, and I'm not alone. Our facility can help patients like myself. The building that my associates renovated looks amazing, especially when compared to the businesses that share our parking lot. The inside was completely cleaned up as it was run down and vacant for a decade before we leased it. They didn't hire people to do this work, they did it themselves every day for several weeks for about twelve hours a week, for about twelve hours a day. My point in telling you that is that they worked hard to provide patients safe access, and you should too, as the people who represent us. The security system is also several thousand dollars. We've also signed a three-year lease of this location that we will not be breaking. There are no refunds for these expenses. To be forward, due to the M S, I am currently on S S D but seeking to re-enter the workforce. As long as I have safe access to cannabis and can consume it, I have faith in returning to work for this job. This job will allow me to return to the workforce after several years of unemployment and provide for my family of four. Without this job, I will be unemployed and have to seek additional help from the state until I could find another one. I would like to provide you with some land use studies from Colorado dispensaries, the most recent land use study out of Colorado, and I gave you a link. There were also some that cast out on crime rates increasing in general. We've added extra security cameras to our facility and are trying to add extra lighting as well. Higher security from a medical cannabis facility also increases security for the businesses surrounding it with more cameras and additional lighting provided. The effect of medical marijuana laws on crime, and then there's another link. In Sacramento, it was also noted that the crime rate went down. An impact in decreasing crime in general, particularly homicide, has also been noted in this study. Medical marijuana's legalization does not... Medical marijuana's legalization does not raise crime rates. Furthermore, we'd like to say that Commissioner Savas came up with a great compromise in the first meeting on the third. Please allow those of us with licenses to open. We've done our work, we've put in the time, and we've complied with state law. Our futures and the futures of the patients and my health rely on it. I'm sure that those of us that have been licensed would be happy to help you come up with rules and regulations. If you'd like to read the rest of what I wrote, I would really appreciate hearing back from you, and I'd like to say one last thing, and I know you're in a hurry. The first line of the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act. "The people of the state of Oregon hereby find that, one, patients and doctors have found medical marijuana to be an effective treatment for suffering caused by debilitating conditions, and therefore marijuana should be treated like any other medicines." That means available, everywhere, just like every other medicine. Thank you.
Lindsey, I gotta congratulate you. I've certainly heard a lot of testimony, and you've got more words in there faster than anybody I've ever met before. That was incredible. You piled it on, and certainly you're welcome to give us an email and expressing everything.
I already did. I'm just waiting for everybody.
Here's the thing about it. We had one hearing, we're going to have another. Probably until that time, we're going to stay a little arm's length of this. We'll certainly take your input, probably not have much back and forth. We're gathering information from everybody, and the staff is helping us towards that decision. We will have this hearing next Thursday at 10 o'clock.
We'll be here.
Oh, I know you will. I just want to point out that when you say "we, the people of Oregon" on that decree, that is the legislative body, and certainly representation is important from our legislative body. The last time I remember this issue, it was voted on two years ago statewide, and it did not pass. So it is the people of Oregon, it is the law of the land, and we're looking at doing a one-year moratorium. Appreciate your input and your investment, but it is not, has never been legal in Clackamas County, ma'am, and it currently is not legal in Clackamas County except for, from the time the legislature met, the end of that, and until we put something together, if we will. So I appreciate your input tonight and also your testimony last time. I'm sure I'll see you next Thursday, right?
Sir, we are not currently dispensing medication. We are following this law, and we will open when we have our license.
I'm not talking about you personally. I'm just saying, right now it's illegal in Clackamas County. You know, that we'll, we'll talk about how we dispose of that next Thursday. I'm sorry, what are you confused about, ma'am?
I'm just confused how it's illegal in an unincorporated Clackamas County when you haven't taken the vote until next week?
Well, are all these, I'm not going to get in a debate tonight about this.
No, I'm just curious.
Mr. McAllister has informed us of where there is possible places. We know of these places. I, we are, we know some have existed for a little period of time, certainly longer than yours, and all that is going to be taken into consideration. We will talk about that actively next Thursday, about these places that exist, how far they are along through the state process, which is important, and we now have information on that. So we, again, we are gathering information as fast as we can on this issue, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming today. Ginny?
I'm Ginny Davidson, and good evening, Commissioners and Chair Ludlow. I live in the unincorporated area up in Westwood. Well, I guess I'm going to say, here we go again. We have the bashing being done, untruths being spoken about two of our county commissioners, political posturing at its best, candidates also coming with negative untruths about two of our current commissioners. But as my dad would have said, if he was still alive, the Coupe de Grau is High Rock's pub, the sign, BS sign. My father was one of the founding Elks. He and his buddies went there all the time. Anyway, it would be very upsetting for him to see that. The Hermans are wonderful people, and people are calling about the sign. They have nothing to do with the sign. That's why I'm here tonight. I've had several phone calls. I guess that's what happens when you've lived in an area for 54 years and been involved. Everybody thinks you should know all the answers. I don't. I have no idea why that sign, because it's a leased sign out of Eugene, I believe it's Lamar. Don't know how long it's supposed to be there or whatever. But having been a business owner for 40 years myself, if a sign like that was placed on my property and some people felt it was against other people's ideas that they should be there, I would have a fit. The Hermans are wonderful people. I was in there to see her the other day. Haven't counted yet the eggs in the basket to see if I'm going to win it, but anyway, people asked me if I knew who was funding the sign. They'd heard rumors that some of the same money that was put into your campaign in Tooties, they mentioned the person, they mentioned so forth. I'm not going to go there because I'm not a negative person. I have, I'm here for a positive, for two people, Elaine and Hook, who have, they're wonderful, done lots of things for the community. And so I can't imagine someone putting a negative piece of garbage above a wonderful business, knowing that it might affect that business. And these people calling me, they thought it was a travesty. So I said, "Well, I don't want you going in there and getting upset, and I want you going in there, and I want you to count the Easter eggs in the basket because you just might win it, and tell Elaine that Ginny Davidson sent you," because we have had many golf tournament banquets there from NAMI. My husband had many golf tournaments when Topper Scott was there. There was no place to eat, so they'd come down and they'd go in the banquet room. How much fun did they have? But anyway, their 20, just one thing, their 23-year-old grandson just passed away Saturday of a blood clot that went through the lung. These people need our prayers, they need our business, and you know what? Go in there and count those eggs in the basket. And would you do me a favor? Tell them Ginny Davidson sent you, because I'm a community person, and this did kind of trouble me, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Ginny. That's the High Rock Pub in Gladstone. You can see it from the freeway.
Yes.
I gotta say, I've been there, and I like their food too, by the way.
We have a program every month. They tell you what they're doing. Mariana Moore goes there on Wednesdays with the, the ladies of the club from Milwaukee.
Well, and real quickly, I have nothing to do with that, and we cannot...
I know you don't. I just heard some of the money.
Let's say that somebody gave Mr. Savas money or Mr. Bernard money this time when they're running, or even a candidate, and they gave money to somebody else later on or immediately thereafter. We can't be held responsible for where they give money. I can't be, so you know, I know what you speak of.
I know, but you look at all the signs along the freeway where they could have, you've been in business, don't you think they could have put it on, over there or gotten a spot? That's the idea. I don't know, you don't know, I don't know, but that's just, that's why I'm here. Thanks.
Thank you, Ginny. All right. We've got Lindsey Reinhardt and Ginny, oh, I did that, sorry, Lindsey.
So take more of your time.
All right. We have Matt, I think it's Sanders, and Melanie Trinen, followed by Steve Bates and Les Poole. Yeah, either one of you can start. Thank you.
Do you want to go first?
Sure. Hi, my name's Melanie Trinen, and I live in Tigard, Oregon. I'm here about the dispensary ban as well. In Oregon, marijuana has been rescheduled as a Schedule II drug, meaning it has medical benefits. There are over 3,000 OMP patients in Clackamas County. Sometimes a grower is not an option, and our conditions do not just go away. I don't really understand why Clackamas would want to force patients to have to go to drug dealers instead of having safe access in a dispensary where medicine is tested and there's security, and it's a safe environment. That's all I have to say.
Well, you set another record, way short, but thank you. Yes, sir. Cool.
I just wanted to thank you all for your concern about the existing patients. I'm a Cornell University graduate and entrepreneur who, along with my partners, have completely renovated the historic tombstone using to a viable, beautiful, and state-licensed medical marijuana establishment which will provide patients with safe access.
And while they're parking.
Sorry about that.
Can you pull the microphone down towards yourself if you're going to keep your head down?
Can you hear me? No? Okay.
Pull it down a little bit. There you go. Go ahead.
So, "Our medicine is fully inspected and exceeds the standard set by the Oregon Health Authority. For example, HB 3460 denotes a maximum sale allowance of 24 ounces per person, while our in-house policy is only one. This keeps the medicine in the safe, above-ground economy where it belongs. In fact, our team, one of whom is a Cornell engineer, is working to establish guidelines for Governor Como's executive order, which will legalize medical marijuana dispensing via New York State hospitals." We have a copy of our policies and procedures, and I emailed all your assistants that as well, along with this email. There's a reason why Ashland Police Chief Terry Holderness stated that there is no evidence that medical marijuana dispensaries will increase crime or make it more likely marijuana will get in the hands of children. Quote, "This is because closed prohibitory policies create crime while regulated and taxed private enterprise builds community." Commissioner Ludlow, one of your stated priorities is to support local businesses by investing in local infrastructure to promote job growth and retention. You met Lindsey and Melanie. I've just hired them, and I have 15 more people that I plan on hiring. That's 15 Clackamas County residents, not to mention the existing stakeholders, which include the patients, who will be adversely affected should access be denied. I have a specialization in environmental economics. I became interested in medical marijuana after witnessing its incredible salutary effects documented by such notable scholars as Dr. Melamed, Professor of Biochemistry at the University of Colorado, as well as Dr. Guzman of the University of Madrid. I have documented those sources as well. MLA. This, their research is irrefutably paradigm shifting in regards to the way the exogenous cannabinoids of the marijuana plant interact with our own and often out-of-balance endocannabinoid system. Truly, the THC molecule has been unequivocally documented as having destroyed cancer cells by way of apoptosis or programmed cell death. I have a Harvard study as well that I'd like to submit through the email. It is my intention, therefore, to bring the highest quality flowers, topicals, edibles, and concentrates to patients who suffer from severe debilitating or life-threatening conditions while simultaneously employing residents of Clackamas County in a spirit of true conscious capitalism. I am confident that our warm, welcoming establishment will allay any fears that our state-licensed medical marijuana facility will adversely affect our community. Thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, we will address time, place, and manner later on, but I want you just to know that every city in Clackamas County has now placed a moratorium on these places. So just so you know, that's already happened, and we will decide again on next Thursday how we wish to go forward on this. I appreciate you showing up. Thank you. And now, Matt Sanders. I just did that, didn't I? Yes. Gosh. Steve Bates, Les Poole.
The gentleman from Boring, Mr. Ferring to me, Les Poole, Clackamas County. By the way, Steve is the head of the Boring CPO, and they meet in the Boring Grange. So let's hear it for the Grange. That was a, that was great to have those folks show up. Good job. Any, any organization that helps bring people together is to our, to our advantage, kind of the opposite of some of the politics that have been going on lately. I too have received a lot of phone calls about billboards and mailings and things that are flying around. I don't question anyone's right to come up and speak here. I'm grateful to be here week after week. I'm sure some people think I'm lacking a life and I just want to come down and be a cable TV star, but I can assure you, I can assure you that the reason I'm here is not that. Another quick comment, that was an excellent presentation on the landslides. We had a huge landslide on our, our property in Tillamook County years ago that was eye-opening. And just today, I drove through an active landslide area on Thayer Road outside of Oregon City, so it's a big concern. I did notice something in the Clackamas Review article. I just happened to pick up a copy of the paper I had, and it said there's a $15 million in cuts that could slash the county budget. Law enforcement and the library system could be hit hardest. And the three commissioners here were very concerned. Well, this is from March of 2002, and the reason I'm sharing that with you is that there's nothing new under the sun. That same newspaper has articles about the need to address the road problem that is now completely out of control. So you've got a lot of work in front of you, and that means you've got to cooperate and get along. I would hope that the viewers would watch the first 15 minutes of last week's meeting. It's okay to come in and make your point, or maybe even take a little jab at an incumbent or a candidate. But Ms. Bowerman's presentation was pretty over the top, and people coming in here wasting time playing "gotcha," as I described it, that's got to end. We can campaign without playing "gotcha." In fact, those of you that receive some of these flyers that are over the top, just put them in a recycling basket and be done with it. Last thing I want to mention is that there's been an ongoing issue. I know folks are tired of it, but Commissioner Bernard's obviously been affected by the light rail, and his property is, is in line to be rezoned at a higher value. And that's been an issue a long time because he never accused himself. Here recently, he read his voting record but neglected to say that if, on February 4th of 2010, he sat in his chambers and made a motion, made and approved and voted twice that day to authorize the $25 million fiasco that you folks inherited for the Milwaukee Light Rail Line. So I appreciate your time as always, and let's clean up our, let's clean up our campaigning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bates.
Chair Ludlow, Commissioner Schrader, and Commissioner Savas. I sit before you this evening as the Chair of the Boring Community Planning Organization. I'm proud to say that the Boring Oregon Foundation, which was founded for the purpose of building a community center in the greater Boring area, received its 501(c)(3) letter from the Internal Revenue Service this week. We'll have a formal press release next Monday. But I'm also here to tell you that Glenn Campbell's coming to Boring tomorrow.
Wow.
Glenn Campbell, British Broadcasting Company correspondent from Edinburgh, Scotland, will be here in Boring tomorrow morning. He'll be interviewing Representative Bill Kenner, Bob Boring, who's the great-grandson of the namesake of Boring, Jim Hart, who's a former correspondent himself with the Sandy Post and the Gresham Outlook, and yours truly. We will be on BBC in Scotland next week. He's going to be doing a documentary on Boring, Oregon, based upon the relationship of Boring and its paired community in Scotland by the name of Dole. I'm also here to tell you that on June the 9th, we're going to have a reception. There is going to be a delegate from Dole, Scotland. On June the 9th, he'll be in Boring, and we are looking forward to creating an environment to welcome him, and we would like for the Clackamas County Commission to be involved. So if you will mark your calendar, we do not have a time of day set yet, but that is in our plans that we will have a reception for the delegate coming from Dole, Scotland on June the 9th. And with that, that's the report from Boring. Thank you very much.
It is. Thank you. Well done. And last but not least, Mr. MacWoods, another repeat performer.
I wanted to be first, Mr. Chair.
You are in our eyes, Mac.
I did. I'm going to protest. I want to be first. Chair Ludlow and staff, also, all the good people that work so hard to put these little gadgets together, I want to compliment them for the job well done. And I always buy four of them. That contributes about 20 bucks a week. Glad to do it. It gives us the proof, the hammer sometimes, or the ability to say, "Thank you, Mr. Krupp." He sat and let me complain last week, and I appreciate it. He didn't even get upset. So Chair Ludlow, I'm MacWoods, Clackamas County, more specifically, Camby. And we're getting close to the new election, and it's now our time to vote what we want to say. For new candidates or incumbents, you get your choice. How do we choose? For new candidates, we should write down what they tell us and then hold it, hold them to it if they're elected. We'll have the proof of the truth, Steve and Karen, to hold you accountable if you change your mind. For incumbents, we have the proof of your past, your voting records on DVDs, and you can't hide it. It's a fact of history, proof of your record on your votes, on what our taxes pay for, and we want the truth from you. When we buy something from the store, we get a purchase of proof, and if... When we buy something from the store, we get a purchase of proof, and if it's defective, we can take it back for a refund. If we get a tax refund when politicians waste our tax dollars on things they vote on, do we get that back? I haven't seen no money come back to me. We have proof of records when a case is dismissed. Like, for example, my case got dismissed. Costs you a little bit of money, but you get the facts. Facts are the records of attorneys talking. That's the record of proof, and this right here contains thirty-five pages of proof, fact. Very interesting to a lot of people, particularly me, because I was the one that had to pay the fee over four thousand dollars total. Be nice to get part of that back, because somebody voted after these records were dismissed to pay the attorney fees for Mr., well, one of the commissioners. I won't call no names, but his initials is Jim somebody B. Many voters were shocked after hearing Mr. Bernard's own voice and his vote claiming he only owned two tiny lots, a record on Block 37 in Milwaukee, when he voted for million-dollar costs related to the light rail project adjacent to all the lots he owned, as Clackamas County public tax records proved to be real and accurate. You know that, John, they're accurate. It's easy to get the facts out there. He's been a Realtor three years longer than me. How do I know this? It was because I provided the public tax records to the Ethics Commission.
Hey, Mac, I'll let you go forty-six more than anybody, longer than anybody else, and we've got to really wrap it up. Sorry.
Did I go over? I didn't even hear it. I can't hear good.
It was a couple times, but not nearly enough evidently.
Well, case a rile, the records speak for themselves, gentlemen. Get it out before you vote, learn who you're voting for and what it's all about. And I could file some ethics complaints on, not ethics complaint, legal complaints on attorneys, like the ones in jail for five years already. Bye.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we reached that portion of the agenda where we will address the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Administration, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon Judicial Department, Fifth Judicial District, for this, for a specialist clerk to support the treatment courts. Under County Council, approval of a settlement agreement with the trustee of the Blue Heron Estate and NRI Global, Inc., regarding outstanding taxes and certain water rights. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the future use of disposition of certain water rights obtained by Clackamas County Service District Number One and Tri-City Service District. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And under the Water Environment Services Department, approval of an agreement to furnish products and services between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Coal Corp, Inc., for the Kellogg Creek Water Pollutant Control Plant Ultraviolet Disinfection Equipment Refurbishment.
Refurbishment.
Refurbishment Project. Approval of a settlement agreement with the trustee of the Blue Heron Estate and NRI Global, Inc., regarding outstanding taxes and certain water rights for Service District Number One and Tri-City Service District. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the future use and disposition of certain water rights obtained by Clackamas County Service District Number One and Tri-City Service District. And that completes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioners want to pull any of the items from the consent agenda? I'll ask for a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that. All right, motion made by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Savis to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Mary, will you do the poll?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes three zero. It's time for the county administrator update. Mr. Krupp.
Well, I just have a few items for you this evening. The first is, I did want to remind the citizens who listen to and watch this program that the Clackamas County Veterans Service Office is open for business now in a new location to serve our veterans and their families. The office is located on the second floor of the Public Service Building. That's this building here that we're currently in at 2051 Kane Road in Oregon City, right here on the Red Soils Campus. The hours are from eight to noon and one to five PM on Monday through Thursday. And if the public would like to get more information, they can contact the office at And then, we had an earlier discussion about the community survey here during citizen comments, and I did want to highlight that the 2014 community survey is available online now, and the public can, can access it through the county website. One important variable that I think's worth highlighting is that overall, a majority of respondents said that the county is on the right track, so, and that's an improvement from 2012, from forty-six percent of our citizens agreeing to that to some fifty-four percent in the current year's survey. This is intended as a scientifically objective survey, involved random telephone calls to some four hundred citizens in the county. And so, I would invite folks to take an opportunity to read the full report. There's a PowerPoint online as well that folks can walk through with colorful graphs right from the county website.
It's raining.
Is that rain? Wow.
We are experiencing a great deal of rain on the side of this building.
Wow.
Yeah.
Gosh.
Interesting.
I'm glad I've got an umbrella in the office, so.
And I know, I know you live in a slide zone, Don, so I just wanted to tell everybody that. Do you have anything more for us, Mr. Krupp?
I have one other item I was going to make you aware of, and this is really an update that's a follow-up to the deliberations the board had regarding the ambulance contract. One of the issues that the board had a significant interest in was advancing, securing additional efficiencies in the emergency medical services system in the county. And this was an issue, of course, of particular interest to Commissioner Smith. I wanted to let you know that work is beginning in earnest on this particular goal. Cindy Becker, our Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services, and her deputy, Mr. Richard Swift, have commenced discussions with AMR, fire districts in the county, CCOM, and emergency medical practitioners to get started on this effort. It will probably take a full year before there is a development of the protocols and procedures and approaches that are intended to help make our system more effective and more efficient. But I wanted to make sure you knew that we were following up to the board's interest in this.
Good. Thank you. All right, it's time for Commissioners' communication. I'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Thank you, Chair. Some recent meetings in, in the community where I am, unincorporated Clackamas County, where I guess we're the default, de facto, city councilors or county commissioners, city councilors for those folks out there, a lot of concern over libraries and, and parks. And it's, I think it's kind of incumbent upon us, I know we try to do the best we can to represent those areas, and I speak to this from time to time, and I think a couple weeks ago, I kind of mentioned this again, but it seems to be a growing concern that the cities have a lot of influence, more so than the county, county commissioners in those unincorporated areas, as it appears to them, that's their perception. But I think we've just got to work hard to try to strike a balance between making sure that we do represent, we do hear them. I know with the CPOs, the Hamlets and Villages, there's always been kind of concern about their future, or their impacts, or their influence at the county level, and, and let them know that we are their voice, and, and I would encourage some of those folks out in that, that are concerned to come and speak to us, either at the commission meetings to get their voice heard if they do have an issue. I know that there's a lady in the audience that brings the libraries to our attention frequently, Mary Anna Moore. But I, I do want to also mention that the, the roundtable, Commissioner Roundtable that we hold on Wednesday nights, the first Wednesday every month, is also another opportunity for those who do not want to be a cable star. And that, this month, or next month, which is May, I believe it's May 5th, May 7th, May 7th, Wednesday night at 5:30, we'll hold that. Bring anything to, to our attention that concerns you, I guess those in the unincorporated area, that's another opportunity for you to be heard as well. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I had a pretty busy week, actually. Started out Monday at the Association of Oregon Counties where we had our Veterans Committee Meeting, where we're actually working with the Oregon Department of Veterans Services, Cameron Smith, who's the director, on actually seeing if we can keep, continue to beef up the presence of Veterans Services Officers in our county and across the state. We are coming up with a legislative agenda that I've shared with public, and I will share with my commissioners and our public and government relations folks, to see if we can continue to support pro-veteran legislation at the state level. And of course, our VSOs have moved, and I certainly hope that people have a chance to see there, go see them if they need, if they want to learn what they've earned from their service to the country. The other thing that we did there, which I thought was important, is that we had a larger countywide discussion with all our counties about workforce design and redevelopment. Workforce, and what we do in workforce is how we attempt to get people jobs with businesses. We try to keep the business needs in, in our head, you know, about what they need, and try and get folks who want to work or need help getting work matched up with them. The governor, bless his heart, is evidently doing a larger redesign. We are part of that conversation, and I hope that we are going to continue to have our own autonomous workforce board here in Clackamas County is kind of what we're pushing for because we do a good job, and we have a high success rate of matching jobs to people. And I'm, I'm very proud of that. We align with our businesses really well, we align with their social services really well, and I think we're the model of what, what we do right in workforce. Also spent Wednesday with the Pacific Northwest Defense Coalition, and they are a subgroup, manufacturing group here in the county that works with local businesses and manufacturers that have things that they can produce or sell or contract with the government department of defense for the, you know, with defense industry opportunities. And I was very, I was very happy to see the number of businesses that are going to these seminars and trainings to see how they can work together to get their, their business, what they have to offer, out to everybody. So, that was kind of a fun day. Lastly, I just want to say something. I don't want to be Pollyanna here, it'd be too smarmy, but I'm just going to say this. The bottom line is, I really enjoy working with all of these commissioners, okay? Chair Ludlow runs a great meeting, he's very soft-hearted, he makes these wonderful balloons for kids. He, he is honest to goodness. He, I, I saw him get teary-eyed once here recently when we had a employee pass away, and I thought that told me a lot, and I, about how he does things and what his feelings are, and I think that the commitment to the work that he's done in corrections with women and people has been great. You know, so I, I, I just like him, the guy. I know we have differences of opinion, I don't always agree with him, I get frustrated. I wish that we didn't miscommunicate, but we're human and it happens, okay? So, we, we're human, right? I love Commissioner Savis because he gets into every detail known to man and God, which I certainly don't have the time or opportunity, you know, I just couldn't do that. So, I know if I have a question, it's something that really drills down, that he's the go-to man for that, and he's extremely knowledgeable in the transportation, as is Commissioner Ludlow, by the way, and extremely knowledgeable with water and environment services issue, wastewater, because he's spent a lot of time there. I like Commissioner Bernard because he's, he's got all that experience as a mayor, so he oftentimes can bring to the table what cities need, you know? And we have to remember, we're a big county with sixteen cities, and having his perspective on that has really been helpful to move us, move us along. And I know we don't, you know, folks don't agree with him on light rail, but, you know, now I think it's time to make lemonade from lemons. It's there, we're going to have to figure it out, you know? Let's, let's concentrate on trying to see if we can get more jobs in that area, maybe with the advent of it, you know? But I do think that he is sincere, I think he's a good commissioner. He also has a very, very great funny sense of humor. And last thing I'm going to say about Tootie, she cracks me up, I just, she's a hoot, okay? You know? You always know where you stand with Tootie, okay? And I, I find that refreshing. I like it. And we've had our issues, oh, I, you know, she kind of got grouchy with me one day, and I got grouchy right back, and then it was over with, you know? So, everybody who serves on this commission brings something to the table, and, and I am actually really happy, I have seen with our strategic planning, I think we're moving forward in a very team-like way. The silly political season will be over soon. Just keep your fingers crossed. The people who are running, nobody's a bad person. Everybody has their reasons for doing what they're doing. Politics is tough and can get pretty mean, but let's remind each other that what we're here for is to focus on transportation, workforce, and jobs, how we help people in our communities hand up, how do we do, be business-friendly and provide good service to people, how we work with our own staff to keep morale high and, and serve with excellence to our constituencies, and frankly, how we, how we're going to manipulate and, and manage, or how we're going to figure out this library issue, because I think that's a really, one of the, one that's dear to my heart, and I'd like to see that figured out. I don't care Gladstone, nor, to me, it, it really doesn't matter exactly where it lands as much as it serves the whole area there. To me, that's the eye on the prize. Obviously, I like to see a bigger library than a smaller library because I think you can serve more people, and I think libraries should be a beautiful, gorgeous place for people to go because it's, they're the heart of the community. So, sorry I talk so much, but I like all of you, and I'm glad we're working together. I do. I can't help it. I can't.
Now, you know, we have some pet names around for each other, and certainly I have a few of Martha I won't repeat here, but ultimately, the woman is a great lift, because with Martha, it's a four-letter phrase, "this too shall pass," or four-word phrase, "this too shall pass." You know, it is great work with Martha, she's been through a lot in her political career, and, you know, let's, let's just boil it down for this commission in our fifteen months of existence. One, we answer people. What a crazy idea, right? We find out information for people. Mr. Krupp now will, has made it, put upon himself to, if any unanswered questions go on from the testimony here, that he will find it out for you. That's a change in this commission. Now, I, like I say, I've chaired over a lot of meetings, ladies and gentlemen, and I receive repeated compliments from staff, from the Multnomah County Commissioners, when I joint chaired our meeting there, and, and from every commissioner on this commission, save one. Now, to answer something in public, what was said about me by a commissioner that I'm disorganized and it's made somehow this commission vulnerable, really? Because see, in addition to, I guess, me, and my desire to place agenda items forward, is Mr. Krupp, and that is his job. He is the professional here. He and I set the agenda, and if you look at the volume of, of work this commission gets done, it's unparalleled. Go backwards and look. We get a lot done, the staff appreciates the direction they get because it's direct information and direction. So, I appreciate that this is campaign season, like Martha always says, and "this too shall pass," but ladies and gentlemen, like I say, anybody who knows me knows I'm not a bully, as was alleged in the last election, and certainly that I've taken care of business on this commission, and certainly have received the compliments that I greatly appreciate for doing that. That said, real quickly on Mr. Krupp's mention of, and what was held was the Community Healthcare Summit, which I attended with Cindy and Richard Swift, and every fire department I can think of was there, every ambulance company was there, and you talk about innovation for ambulance services, and AMR was there. And all of them listened very intently to some presentations made by people from across America who have found a better innovative model in order to, to, to serve their clients, their customers, those in need. And they have found by, and Toowaltown Valley Fire and Rescue does something similar, is they have a van, and they send that van down instead of the truck, the supervisory vehicle, the very things we talked about during the ambulance contract period here. There is truly innovation coming from people who have done it bigger, faster, and cheaper, and we certainly want to follow that, and I'm glad to see all of our healthcare representatives there at that meeting, and promising to stay at the forefront of these innovations to save customers and clients, those are the needy people in need, time and money. In so many instances, when you call 911, you really need an advice nurse, and this is what one of the communities did, they embedded advice nurses into their CCOM or 911 area. An advice nurse was actually in there. An advice nurse was actually in there and she is able to contact another advice nurse if it has, just if it's stomach pain, another one if it's been a fall, but they're okay, they're just calling. So again, that, what that does is, it allows our healthcare emergency vehicles to be used only on truly emergencies. This is a very delicate area, you can imagine, to be able to send out a van or have you talk on the phone versus be picked up or taken care of by somebody. But again, this is part of the innovations and the savings we have to put forward as part of the healthcare revisions going across America. But again, I'm glad to see Cindy Becker, our Director of Health, Housing and Human Services, and Richard Swift, who are second to that, doing a real good job of gathering information, and we will probably be promoting some of these innovations as they're more studied and the results are in about them. I plan to attend some meetings, we all have different outreach areas coming May 1st. I won't read them here tonight, but I am, Mary always gives me another thing to read, which I better find here quickly. It is about town halls. Now, I might tell you that Sandy, we had, and I would hope this record would be broken, but certainly the most amount of people there of any previous, I thank you, Mary, it's online there, they are. The next one will be September 10th Town Hall, Estacada City Hall, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., 475 Southeast Main Street, Estacada, hosted by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce and later the one in November in Happy Valley. Again, Molalla had a lot of very interested people, some really great, excuse me, Sandy did, there's some great questions out in Sandy. Molalla before that had a lot of, a lot of those too. It's really great for us to get out in the community and hear people's questions directly and see if we can answer them and see if we're later found right about those answers. So I want to thank you all here for coming here tonight and I appreciate your time and talking at us or to us, and drive safely home in this downpour for those who are here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, no, there being, no further business before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.